Thank you.
Thank you. We are live councillors, please stand for the opening of the meeting. Welcome to this September scheduled meeting of the Swan Hill Rural City Council. Swan Hill Rural City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pays its respects to their elders past and present. Councillor Kelly, the declaration please.
We, the councillors of Swan Hill Rural City Council, declare that we will undertake the duties of the office of councillor in the best interest of our community and faithfully and impartially carry out the functions, powers, authorities and discretion vested in us to the best of our skill and judgement.
Thank you, you may be seated. It was remiss of me not to welcome those people in the public gallery and I will remind you if you could put your mobile phones to silent whilst we conduct the meeting please. And welcome to everybody on the public on the live stream as well. Welcome councillors, everybody here, so there's no apologies. And welcome to directors and officers who are present. Mr Scott Barber, Chief Executive Officer, Bruce Myers, Director of Community and Cultural Services, Leah Johnson, Director of Infrastructure, Michelle Granger, Director of Development and Planning, and Helen Morris, who is the Acting Director of Corporate Services. We will move on to the confirmation of the minutes from the August meeting. Have somebody to move those minutes please. Councillor McKay, secondor, Councillor McPhee, those in favour? Motion is carried, thank you. Councillors, do we have any disclosures of conflict of interest? If none from other councillors, I wish to disclose that I have a conflict of interest in item 2.3, Murray Valley Highway, Swan Hill Service Station, as that site is directly across the road from my business, so I'll be declaring a conflict of interest and stepping out of the room at that time and will require an acting chair. Thank you, could have somebody move that disclosure of conflict of interest please? Councillor Kelly, secondor, Councillor Young, all those in favour? That's carried, thank you. Mr CEO, we have no joint letters or petitions, as I understand it. We have no requests for public question time or any requests for an open forum. So we will move to agenda item 2.1 to reopen former drag strip site and leasing options. Ms Granger, your report please.
Thank you, ma'am. Since council resolved in December to close the former Swan Hill Drag Strip, there've been approaches to council to use the facility for a range of motorsport uses not related to the drags. Council's made a number of decisions leading up to this report, so on the 18th of June, council passed a resolution to invite all parties who'd expressed an interest in reuse of the facility to present to council. Subsequent to these presentations, council then had a further resolution on the 13th of August, calling for a report outlining how council could lease the former drag strip to the Skid City Consortium. There are a number of components to that resolution regarding access, timing of the lease, waivers and types of events, as well as how any lease would work with other users of the Chism Reserve. The Chism Reserve Motorplex is council-owned land and managed by leases rather than by user agreements. The leases are all in overholding, so they actually finished their term in December last year, but while we've been going through this process of changes to the drag strip, the leases are in what we call overholding, they're still considered to be operational until we come up with another form of lease. In order to follow the process set out in our leasing policy, council would need to advise the CRC that we are intending to enter into a lease with another body. Informing how we respond to the August council decision, we've referred to council's leasing and licensing policy to insist in ensuring that whatever process we follow, it's equitable and consistent and applies equally to other council-managed land. The policy embeds principles that require council to consider community benefit and social inclusion, good governance and accountability and environmental sustainability. Having regard to this policy and knowing that there is more than one interested party in leasing or using the former drag strip, we consider it prudent for council prior to enacting a specific resolution, calls for expressions of interest to lease the former drag strip. There shouldn't need to be any further planning approval as the land is known special use and is set aside particularly for motor uses. The EOI should incorporate elements of the resolution regarding the lease period, memorandum of understanding, areas of acceptance of the existing conditions, waiving any liabilities and cooperating with the Chism Reserve and council as it reviews what approach it takes for the drag strip in accordance with its December resolution. So there is a recommendation in front of you. If we have any questions pertaining to leases, we may use Ms Morris, Ms Chislet to provide council with specific advice.
Thank you, Ms Granger, any questions councillors? Councillor Kelly?
I had... My question was in regard to, on page 13, it says... Actually, page 14, it says, under consultation, it says that there is no need to carry out a separate consultation process as the proposed lease is for a period of less than 10 years. So my question is, wouldn't it be that in reality, from looking at the proposal of at least one of the prospective groups that want to lease it, that in reality it will be, it will be more than 10 years?
Your question, Councillor Kelly, please.
I'm just forming my question.
Giving context to what may be debate, so if you could ask your question please.
Wouldn't it be, in reality, that it would be more than 10 years and so we should be prudent and be holding a separate consultation process because of the, you know, $14 million has been talked about?
You've asked your question. You've asked your question, we'll give Ms Granger the opportunity to respond.
So, we were looking at a number of things as to why we came up with three-year lease. One, it was part of the August resolution that we look at a three-year lease with Skid City. And the other major factor is that the December resolution asks us to do a strategic review and we think that the outcomes of that strategic review may influence the way council goes, so having a shorter lease than a longer lease would be to council's benefit.
And the follow-up question is, if council chose, could it, even though there's a 10-year period that you have to do consultation if it's more than 10 years, could we do consultation anyway? Is it our, do we have the dis... Can we do that?
I would think we could do that, it's just that it's not strictly in accordance with our policy and we'd need a separate council resolution directing that.
Yep.
I'll move motion, I'll hold that if there's a, he'll take another question.
Just in relation to lease, Ms Granger, I understand we don't have to go to community consultation for 10 years because it's under 10 years, the lease could be free with that option of free further?
Again, that could be entertained, but that wasn't part of the August resolution that we've been working to.
Any other questions, otherwise I'll take a motion from Councillor Moore.
Oh, I had a question.
It's important, Mr Mayor, you can actually take resolutions without the questions being finished.
Thank you, councillor, you are correct, so I'll take the motion from Councillor Moore. Pardon? And then we'll have Councillor Kelly's question.
Microphone.
Microphone, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The motion is that council delegates authority to the CEO to: One, formally advise the Chism Reserve Complex Incorporated that it seeks to lease that part of the site that was known as the Swan Hill Drag Racing Facility. Two, to negotiate a lease of the former drag strip facility to the Skid City entity guided by the following principles: undertaking normal business due diligence of the Skid City entity; a minimum three-year lease period; a lease fee that is comparable to the other user groups on the Motorplex site; ensure common access is maintained for all users of the Motorplex site; ensure that there is a memorandum of understanding between the Skid City entity and other Motorplex users; acceptance of the existing conditions of the facility and associated defined areas; waiving any legal liability of council in relation to the condition of the drag racing track and associated defined areas; details of insurance coverage for all proposed activities; cooperative participation in council's strategic review of the Motorplex; and finally, no demand on council for financial contributions towards future development.
I have a secondor for that motion. Councillor Young, you have a second or motion, I'll now take your, before we start the debate, I'll take your question, Councillor Kelly.
On page 17, there are an 18 and 19 of the agenda, there are three boxes. Logically, you would think that they should have been together. Is that just a printing thing, that they weren't joined? Because each of those boxes meant to match up?
That's correct, they should be read across the page, so they've been given to you on portrait rather than landscape, which would have showed them as one page.
Which did make it difficult to understand, but, yep.
Any further questions? No further questions?
Five more questions, Councillor Moore.
No, it's not a notice of motion, so no questions to Councillor Moore. Questions only to Ms Granger unless she delegates it to somebody else.
Still, I'll ask Ms Granger, still unclear to me, is Skid City a not-for-profit organisation, a community group or a commercial entity?
As yet, we haven't done our due diligence in the paperwork that we've seen from Skid City, they say they are a not-for-profit organisation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Moore.
I'd like to move an amendment.
Amendment? Sure. And your amendment has been, your amendment to motion?
Yep. I'd like to add a point in there that after it says a minimum three-year lease period, add a point that says council will conduct... Which is what my question was about. Council will conduct a consultation process.
Is that it?
If lease is extended...
If lease is more than three years. I just want to ensure that...
That's all?
Can I just ask, when is that to take place, at the end of the three-year period? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, if during negotiation, the lease is, it says here a minimum of three years, that means it could be three plus three plus three or three plus seven or...
So if, I want to, I want to trigger a consultation process. Are you saying if it's more than three years that we go into a consultation process? Is that the intent?
Yes, that's the intent of that. So if it's negotiated, any more than...
Hang on. Councillor Moore understands, are you willing to accept that?
I'm willing to accept that.
You will accept that as part of the motion, so there's no need for the amendment?
Yep.
Thank you. Nothing further, Councillor Moore?
Sorry, I didn't understand that, is it the amendment on it?
So, the amendment is now included? So Councillor Moore has accepted the proposed amendment to be part of the motion? So there's no need for that to be treated as an amendment to the motion?
Okay, it's just part of the original motion?
It's now part of the original motion. Part of, sorry, part of, yes, part of Councillor Moore's motion, thank you.
Now understand, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Moore?
Thank you, Mr Mayor King. Councillors, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to grow and expand the Swan Hill Motorplex. An opportunity at no further expense to the ratepayers, and that expense so far has been $646,056.67. That ratepayers have already coughed up. We have a white elephant in an economic black hole, so how do we get ourselves out of it in the best way possible and in a timely manner? So let's address a few of the concerns. Major one is liability. It is clear that through a lease agreement, an acceptance of the current track conditions and that any liability will be transferred and accepted by the Skid City entity. Process: On the 18th of June 24, Councillor King moved that council receive submissions from the four interested parties who have approached it in relation to the possible use of the Swan Hill Drag Strip. It is in my view, you know, the fact that we haven't advertised this fact, is in my view that advertising was done when we closed the drag strip. That went nationwide and that, you know, what precipitated, the expressions of interest that came, unsolicited, came to us. So I'm thinking we've been pretty open and transparent so far. Cart Before The Horse has been mentioned a few times. We've had several strategic reviews over the years, the last two, this next one, I can't see it being a lot different, it'll be same outcome, different day. On July, the July 11 Master Plan Report, on page 49, an old quote: "The brief required an analysis of income generating opportunities. Infrastructure improvements for the facility to be self-sustaining and potential for private sector investment is unlikely the complex will be completely self-sustaining without local government and external support. Like many other sport and rec facilities and infrastructure powered by local government, Chism Reserve will require this for sought specifically with infrastructure developments and upgrades." Councillors, we have the people here to do it. We have the private investment with the sufficient horsepower to do the job. Swan Hill Motorplex Master Plan, page 7, 2019 to 21. Councillors, I'll quote again. "Developments listed as a top priority have been included in the implementation plan and will become the key focus for Chism Reserve Complex over the next three years to work towards achieving. It is noted that some of the projects will need major sponsorship or government funding to come to fruition. As such, the incorporation will work towards completing project scopes and business cases to enable funding in the future to be sought." Councillors, all the economic benefits are all outlined in here, I haven't got enough time to go through and read it page by page, but it's many, many millions of dollars and we have a time-sensitive decision to make here. And we have the people to do it and they've publicly said that they will walk. I don't know how many times I've heard investors come, our own investors, our own homegrown investors, come to me before I came to council, it was one of my major prompts to get onto council, was, "We tried to work with council, they made it too hard, too long, so they walked. They took their millions to another municipality, to the next-door municipality. And if we get to this point where we've got this reputation as being a very hard and difficult place to invest, the people with money, they've got a choice, they can go next door or they can go to the next state." Councillors, I believe we've done sufficient due process, we, through what we've been, and at every point, we have tried to do the right thing. At every point, we've consulted with the executive and the CEO and at the last minute it comes up that we've got to go through this extra process, which should have been brought up right at the start. Finally, the policy, which has been here, I don't see anywhere on it that says we have to go through an expression of interest. It refers to a document called the Lease and Licensing Guidelines, which is guidelines, they're not actual laid in the ground, concrete in the ground policies or strict things we have to adhere to, they're guidelines.
30 seconds, Councillor Moore.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. "Inture council-owned facilities used to meet demonstrated community needs, optimise use of community facilities, support and encourage diversity programmes, assist not-for-profit and volunteer-based, encourage active and healthy lifestyles." All the principles there, the Skid City Consortium has agreed to. "Inture and transparent and equitable processes of granting new leases or licences." I believe we've done enough. We might not stick strictly to the letter of the law, but the outcome is the same. We have called for submissions, those people submitted, we have assessed them and I have assessed them, I've been to the meetings of the ratepayers' meeting, the user group a meeting at the Fed and I've listened to all concerns. Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Moore. Councillor Young, do you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just want to say I believe this is one of the greatest opportunities for Swan Hill that we could have had in a long time. We've got letters that have come in from people in Swan Hill saying that they feel that it's also a great opportunity for Swan Hill. And when we've been going through the drag strip process, we've had all this communication from all the different areas, whether it's South Australia, right up the coast here, over here, down to Melbourne and even across out into the bigger cities in the other states, saying that Swan Hill is an ideal location because of its strategic location right in the middle. And I think it's one of the greatest opportunities we can have. One of the past criticisms of Swan Hill has been, "Why hasn't Swan Hill developed like Ituka and Mordura?" And this has been because of objections by the community in many cases. And if you look back and the old stories about, "Why haven't we got Nestle, why haven't we got this, why haven't we got that?", and that's exactly what happened, we had these objections come in that really stopped things from happening. This is a great opportunity that's been reflected by the number of letters to the councillors and if we don't go with it, we will lose it, it will go somewhere else, surely. Once again, that they will walk and we won't have them. So I just think that we should move on with it, get on with it and let's put Swan Hill on the map.
Thank you, Councillor Young. Do you have any speakers against the motion? Councillor McPhee?
Yeah, look, thanks, Mr Mayor. Firstly, I would like to congratulate the Swan Hill Drag Club and the Skid City Consortium for coming up with this proposal. It is a great opportunity. I don't disagree with that at all. It has been said that I'm about closing the drag strip down. I have never said those words. I have said there's going to be no more community money spent on the drag strip. If we can get that up and running by all means, let's go for it. I'm the only councillor around this room that has been on this through the whole process. There's been some issues with it right from the start, we're aware of that. This is an opportunity to move forward and get out of that. I can see that as the case. But, in saying that, you go back to our council plan, our values, two of the five values are about fairness, about being equal to all people. And look, while going through the process, Skid City may be the person who wins the ultimate lease. And as I say, like in relation to them, Mark and the other parties of Skid City, congratulate them for the times they've spent travelling up here. They've come up and spoken to me, they've come up to and spoken to a number of community groups, I congratulate them for that, they are interesting for sure. But fairness is one of our values, accountability is the other. Unfortunately, as far as other councillors go, I'm disappointed you think that Swan Hill is not progressing. In the time window of council, yes, we have progressed. There are always some hiccups in some areas, this is one of those areas. But that doesn't stop us following due process. We've got to be fair, councillors, and that's all it is. Like I said, Skid City may be the ultimate one that wins out in the end, but it's all about process and governance. That's when councillors come unstuck, as councillors, as executive, when we don't follow the proper governance rules. And this is what we're trying to short-circuit here because there's a number of councillors may not be sitting on the next term. That's not an excuse to push this through. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor McPhee. Do you have any speakers in favour of the motion? Any other councillors that wish to speak to the motion? I'll allow, thank you. Councillor Kelly, just to remind, if you're not speaking councillors, if you could please turn off your microphones, just for clarity on the live stream, thank you. Councillor Kelly?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Look, a few times that people have said that I'm trying to, with motions that I've put, that I'm trying to hijack proper process, council process or queue jump. And it's quite hurtful when people say that, but I can see a correlation here because I think, you know, we must not be seen to be subverting normal process, either fiscally, reputationally or legally. We do, we must be able to look with the review that we're doing of the Motorplex, we must be able to look at the full exploration of options and I think if we lock ourselves into a three-plus lease, that could change our ability to do that. It is unfortunate that media has created expectations and there's a lot of disinformation and I do thank the people who've written letters and emails to councillors expressing their opinion. Everything with this proposal has been a bit topsy-turvy, there's only been two assemblies since the last motion was moved, but we have to see due diligence, we cannot rush this. It's, we're not a private business, we are a government entity. There's still more questions that haven't been answered. The leasing and licensing policy is important and I don't think we had an EOI when we closed the track in December, that's not the case, so I disagree with Councillor Moore on that. We need to have good governance and accountability, we need transparency for the good and making... Our role is to make decisions for the good of the whole community, using the overarching governance principles and ensuring integrity, we want to be able to see that. We must avoid bad decisions and decisions that are made under duress or pressure could be, could be, come into that category. We need to conduct ourselves in the proper way, we can't have decisions sabotaged. I mean, the chaos that has existed at the Motorplex, where, you know, divide and conquer is happening and they're not good situations for making decisions. It's not visionary to put council at risk and the need for scrutiny is so important. So we need to ensure that our decisions are made in equitable, impartial, legal manner, fairly, on merit, and we cannot bypass consultation. People are entitled to communicate their views and have their interests considered, otherwise our decisions can be open to challenge. So we need to give the public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of our decision-making process and we need to always consider conflicts, you know, this...
It's time, Councillor Kelly.
So I have concerns about this motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Jeffrey, do you wish to speak against the motion?
Yep, thank you. First, I spoke against the motion based on the integrity that I hold myself to as a councillor. The Skid City proposal for private investment is very promising, but we need to ensure that we, as a government entity, follow the correct process. And I understand that this will be a point of frustration for Skid City and a number of users, but the process is maybe close the track in December, some entity or groups approach council wishing to explore opportunity to use the drag strip, but we haven't followed the expression of interest process. No different to when we build the new pioneers' settlement or we build the new art gallery or we build the new soccer club or we're less experienced or we're less at the like both café or caravan parks, we have to follow a process where everyone has the opportunity to know that council is open to leasing the track before we do it. So, Skid City proposal is really good, but we need to follow the proper process to ensure that we've given everyone a fair and equitable opportunity. So if this motion falls over, I'm quite happy to move the recommendation that is put forward on the report, but we need to make sure we go through the proper expression of interest process to let the community know and let other people, private or user groups that are out there now, know that we will entertain a lease of the drag strip. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Jeffrey. Councillors, I wish to speak in favour of the motion, in the absence of a deputy mayor. Could I have a nomination for somebody to take the chair temporarily whilst I speak to the motion, please?
I'm going to need Councillor McPhee.
Councillor McPhee, do you accept that nomination? Thank you, Councillor McPhee.
Can I just ask a question about process? Am I allowed to speak?
No, we're in the debate. You can speak after I've spoken.
That's all I wanted.
Thank you.
Councillors, to me, this motion is not just about a drag strip. This motion is a defining moment about who we are in leading an organisation to create outcomes for our municipality. This motion makes abundantly clear to investors and developers that Swan Hill Rural City Council is ready to welcome you to grow our municipality. If you're against seizing this opportunity, which is fully supported by the business community of Swan Hill through SwanLink, what you are saying to investors is, "Go away. We don't want your investment, we don't want to grow." We are saying we don't want the economic benefits such as advanced healthcare systems, extra housing, tertiary education opportunities or first-class community facilities. And we truly will be the place where the good old days never really ended. This motion draws a line in the sand between using the... This motion draws a line in the sand between using the excuse of due process, which is simply code for let's hide behind bureaucracy to do nothing, and grabbing an opportunity that's staring you in the face to create a solution to an eight-year-old problem. We are not breaking any rules or laws by supporting this motion. Skid City are ready to go. They are ready to invest. They are ready to create a solution. They have community support for a facility that was originally constructed for the community as a drag strip. Most importantly, they are accepting the as-is situation and they don't require any ratepayer money to breathe life into this mothballed facility. As far as is possible, they are minimising the risk to council. To address those who want to claim that we need to see who else is interested, the motorplex site is zoned for special use. The special use is motorsports. We've had interest from the Two Peak Drag Racing Bodies in Australia, International Hot Rod and Drag Association, and ANDRA, who are supporting the Skid City proposal. An expression of interest does nothing other than waste time. There are not other people with millions of dollars out there sitting in their lounge chairs waiting for us to release an expression of interest document for the drag strip site. I thank and admire the other local motorsports enthusiasts who have offered up a proposal as well. However, some of what they have proposed, they could do now on their own leaseholds if they really wanted to. And the balance of it is a long-term plan which will require more council investment, more government funding from governments that don't have any money, and rely on the same group of people to do more work. And we know from other community and sporting groups in the municipality, the greatest risk to long-term sustainability is membership, volunteers, and money. Economic development plans, business support programmes mean absolutely nothing. They're just words if we are not prepared to support those who want to invest in our community. Councillors, I urge you to support this motion, to tell the world that when it comes to motorsports, Swan Hill is the best in the North West. And when it comes to investment, we are here to enable growth, development, and prosperity in our municipality. Carp DM sees the day. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors.
Do you need a motion?
No, no. councillor McKay, you wish to speak? Just your microphone, please.
I'm okay. I have your phone.
Yeah, have you not to speak?
I have your phone on this.
Okay. councillor Moore, you have two minutes for write of reply.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So I've tried to address all the concerns regarding due process. I believe we've done enough. In my opinion, we've done enough. My biggest fear is that we will lose the Skid City Consortium and a golden opportunity. And that will bring with it considerable reputational risk for our community in, with investment in our town. And they have very long-term consequences. Growth is everything in this game. Grants are given out on growth prospects of every town and the Grants Commission, and we've all been there to see what happens there. If we're not growing, we don't get a good score. Simple as that. So we need things that make us grow. councillor King has taken the words right out of my mouth in terms of Carp DM. Seize the day. That day is today. That day is this hour, and that day is this minute when you cast your vote. Seize the day, councillors, and let's seize this opportunity, which is a magnificent opportunity, and just get on with it. I believe we've done enough in terms of openness and transparency and listening and reviewing submissions that have come before us. I believe this is truly the way to go. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Moore. Debate's been had, so I'll now put the motion. The motion is, it was on the screen. I think we all know what the motion is. Oh, system's down. Okay. We all know what the motion is. Those in favour of the motion, those against the motion?
Call for division, Mr Mayor.
A division. Thank you councillor Moore. Those in favour of the motion, raise your hands. councillor Moore, councillor Young, councillor King. Those against the motion, raise your hands. councillor McKay, councillor Jeffrey, councillor McPhee, and councillor Kelly. With no motion, councillors, can I have an alternative? With no resolution of that report, can I have an alternative motion?
I'll move the motion as per the recommendation, Mr Mayor.
As per recommendation, move councillor McPhee. Sorry, I'm just catching up with paperwork here. Do I have a second for that motion? councillor Jeffrey? You wish to speak to the motion, councillor McPhee.
Well, I think it's all been said in the last one, Mr Mayor. It's not about closing the facility down. It's about due process, and unfortunately, that is the case. That is the course we need to follow. This was only closed down as of December last year. Maybe if the motion to have a list had come up many months ago, then years ago, we could have resolved this by then. So just because a motion went late doesn't mean we've followed due process. I think this is the opportunity, and I certainly hope that Skid City stays in the game because I do see that they will be a very valuable asset to this community in the long run. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor McPhee. councillor Jeffrey, do you wish to speak?
I'd like to. Full of support of the recommendation. As I said earlier, the Skid City proposal is good private investment. It's very promising.
I'd like to go. Please.
Thank you. I'll start again. As I alluded to earlier, the Skid City proposal for private investment is very promising, but we need to go out and make sure that any other party and that our community knows that we will assess and call upon any interested groups to take on a lease of the drag strip. The lease, which would take a bit of time to get prepared, will define the period, the fee, and the legal liability and any conditions that have to work in with the Chisen Reserve Complex Incorporated Group who hold the leases for the other user groups as well. So we have to be out there. We have to be transparent. We don't just go out and pick who we want to build buildings or who we want to lease cafes or any other buildings. We have to make sure that we're transparent and everyone has an equal opportunity. I fully appreciate that it's especially designed, and there aren't many people that would invest in drag strip, but we still have to follow the process. It doesn't matter what we're doing or how we're doing it. So support the recommendation and I fully encourage Skid City to hang in there. They're certain they've got a million dollars to spend out there, so a couple more months delay will not make it any harder for them to potentially be the successful lesee of the drag club, of the drag strip. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Jeffrey, anybody wish to speak against the motion? If not, I will put the motion. All those in favour? You want to speak against the motion?
No, I'll speak for them.
No, in the interest of time, I'll move on. If there's no speakers against the motion, I'll put the motion. Those in favour, motion is carried. Thank you councillors. Thank you members of the gallery. I assume most of you are here for that agenda item. You are free to stay or you are free to go, and I thank you for your attendance at the meeting today. Councillors, next item on the agenda, item 2.2. I'll just, actually, I'll just wait until they leave. Item 2.2, councillors, small towns' future development. Ms Granger.
Councillor, I'm pleased to present to you the Small Towns' Future Development Plan. The aim of this plan was to determine the capacity, if any. There was future housing growth in eight of our towns across the municipality. The criteria that applied when we were looking at each of the towns was the characteristics of the townships, the housing market, zoning and overlays, vacant land, infrastructure opportunities, and constraints. The report was set out in such a way that we have a version that we can use for confidential reasons, which we'll talk to later in the meeting. And then this version is one that will be available to the public to deal with for our small town community planning groups, for our own housing work. It looks at recommendations made for each township that is, looks at housing as well as ways to improve the amenity of each of the townships. It's undergone review. It was a desktop report and it's undergone review, but it hasn't undergone any community consultation yet, and that can occur once council has adopted it. Within the report, you've got a table that outlines for each town what are some of the priorities for development and what are some other actions to improve the towns. At this stage, the report makes recommendations for each town, some of which will require additional budgets and will be considered as part of our community planning programme. I recommend to council that you adopt the summary report and that we start using it as a valuable tool.
Thank you, Ms Granger. Any burning questions, councillors? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
I have a question.
Yep.
Ms Granger, with the item three in that recommendation, would that require any further addition to that recommendation to have those, the recommendations that come out of the Homes Diar study brought up, brought into the next budget process? Or does...
Thank you. Next question. Ms Granger?
So at this stage, we haven't recommended that they go straight to budget. What we really want to do is work through this report with the community planning committees. We already give them an amount per year that they could choose to use to support one of these projects, but definitely something we would work with them on in the future as to how some of these works could be funded. But we think that's a bit too early just yet.
Thank you. Do I have a note? Question?
Yes, Granger. The report's being done as a desktop report. It's fantastic. It's a great report. Just wondering if there's any opportunity, the town of Warrenin South has been assessed as having limited priority. Is there any vehicle or way that a bit of local input could maybe amend? Because there is a lot of industry in Warrenin South and a need housing. The town does have services. And so I think the report's very good, but there is some debt and sort of lack of understanding of industry in that area.
I think there's probably three opportunities. So one is when they get it in front of their community planning group and how they would like to use it. We're definitely looking at low-density residential land in that locality, so it's another area where they could raise views. And the third one would be in the planning scheme review. Is this a town that has changed since we last reviewed the planning scheme and could benefit from a structure plan?
Thank you.
Thank you. Kind of a motion, councillors. councillor McKay?
I'd like to move the motion.
As per recommendation, seconded for the motion. councillor Moore, thank you. You wish to speak to the motion, councillor McKay?
Yes, please. This is a really fantastic report, although I did point out what I thought was a very small deficit. It is really, really thorough. So it looks at the available residential housing, zoned residential housing lots and the vacant lots in all of the small towns. It looks at the infrastructure, the electricity, the sewage, the water supply, as well as other services such as health and education. So it looks at opportunities that are available and what, where we could be supporting, assisting, facilitating the growth of housing in those towns. We have a very large municipality and there are many people who would like to live close to where they work. And this really does sort out a lot of the priorities. I think it's a really wonderful report which will help to see advancement of the smaller towns. It is quite an anomaly that in the area between Warrenin South and Boundary Bend, there's been an explosion of horticultural activity, but the towns are lagging behind. So they are not developed. They've not really advanced. And this gives us the policy support to help encourage that. So thank you very much to the officers who organised for this report to be done and much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McKay. councillor Moore?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, a lot of this report was basically confirming what we've already known for a long time. And then it points out there will coalesce the areas of advocacy for us, mainly around potable water and sewage. Some of those small towns are basically third world without them. And it's time that we increased our, improved our advocacy for these basic services in our smaller towns. And there'll be no advancement in a lot of them, in some of them, without potable water and sewage. Let's get out of third world. Let's get into the real world and get things up to standard. And this document helps us to get that. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Moore. Does anybody wish to speak against the motion? Somebody else wish to speak in favour of it? councillor Jeffrey?
Yeah, just briefly, I really appreciate the work that has gone into this report. It's very thorough. And it has led to one of our outcomes, which is the upper consultation for the community on let's talk about the rural living and the low-density strategy that we've got up. I've noted there's a couple of variances. This report says Warrenin South is low priority for investment, but that consultation piece has a couple of blocks in Warrenin South and one of them, the owner is keen to develop. So don't take it that council sees Warrenin South, just as an example, as a low priority. We will be supportive of planning applications that are appropriate and open up more opportunity for our smaller towns to get some rural living or low-density residential blocks up and available for development, which people are certainly looking for in our municipality. So I really appreciate the report and the work that's coming out of it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Just in the interest of time, councillors, if there's no speakers against, do you wish to speak against the motion?
No, I'd like to speak for them.
If there's no speakers against the motion, I'm going to put the motion. Those in favour? Motion is carried. Thank you. Item 2.3, councillors, could I have a nomination for an acting chair whilst I leave the room due to conflict of interest?
Oh, don't worry. councillor McKay?
councillor McKay, do you accept?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. One for councillor Moore.
So the next item on the agenda is 2.3 Murray Valley Highway, Swan Hill Service Station. And I invite Ms Granger to speak to the report.
Thank you. This is a planning report, council. It's, in December last year, you refused an application for a service station on the southern entrance to Swan Hill on the Murray Valley Highway. Since that time, the applicant has lodged an appeal with VCAT and the matter has had two compulsory conferences, which has seen amended plans be tabled to address some of the concerns of the objectors. Through the compulsory conference, number one, the items that needed to be addressed, dealt with fencing along the residential boundary, which is the railway line boundary, addressed submission of an acoustic report and an updated landscaping plan. All of those items were presented to all parties at the compulsory, the second compulsory conference on the 27th of August, which saw all of the objectors agree to the changes and withdraw their appeals to VCAT. So that leaves council as the only party. At the compulsory conference, because the issues largely were resolved with the objectors, council indicated that we may give in principle support to those changes, and this report comes to you today to formalise that position. So we've reviewed the conditions that the permit would be subject to, checked that the issues that were of major concerns to the objectors have been resolved, and that is with acoustics, with fencing, with the service station being chainlocked overnight so that trucks can't sit and idle. So it should protect the residential amenity that there was concern about. So our recommendation is asking that council give its consent to a permit being issued and advise VCAT of that outcome.
Do I have any questions?
No, topic questions. One of the conditions was, in order to stop trucks entering the city, we should put a chain across the fence. Who enforces that condition?
If it's non-compliant with it, we'll end up to council to enforce it.
Yep, yep. That, yes, would be prepared off. So another question is, if we, can we support the development? With a, like, if we were to say instead of a chain, we prefer being gate-put-on, or is that outside of the process that VCAT is following?
It's probably outside because it's not what's in the listed conditions. But we could have a go and go back to VCAT saying we support all, but we would prefer a more... But we could have a go and go back to VCAT saying, we support all, but we would prefer a more permanent barrier rather than chains.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, further question, if they still decide not to go to, not allow the approval, what is the potential liability burden, council, if this VCAT could quite go, the process is followed?
It would then go to a full hearing of VCAT and I think we would need to be careful that we go there with valid reasons and we're not seen as being vexatious so that we don't get costs awarded against us. I think when we've had thirty objectors withdraw, the chance for costs being awarded against us taking it to a full hearing may be quite high.
Uh, so, no, it's fine. Oh, it'll be fine. Thank you.
And councillor Kelly?
I just had a question because I do remember Mr Costa, um, predicting that this would happen. Um, but is there any, um, comeback from council to be able to, um, like, did the VCAT understand that, as in the report, um, the things that we needed to make a decision weren't provided? So then we have to go to VCAT and they provide what we need. So is there any, like, that, you could say that it's wasting council's time and money having to go through a lot more time when the proponent could have, um, given the documents that they needed in regards to lighting and, uh, noise acoustic things are. It's a difficult situation.
I do understand your question. It's an unfortunate reality that when you go to VCAT, you actually tend to get a better quality proposal before you than what the council has been given. In some regards, that is because they are trying to address the concerns that have been raised through objections. It's not uncommon.
And I suppose my question was, did, did you, were you, was it a member, a VCAT member who presided?
Yes, yes.
Did the member have an empathy for the, um, objectors or council in that, in that regard?
Yes.
Hmm. Thank you.
Or do I have a move on?
I'm going to go with recommendation.
Second up, that's councillor Jeffrey. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, look, um, the fact that the objectors have, um, come to agreement with the applicant and so advocacy and also the other services as well, obviously Vic Roads and others still have, um, air conditions put into this permit as well, which is very, um, pleasing. The other part of this is that the planning permit, when and if it's granted by VCAT, which is likely to be granted by VCAT, is only valid for two years. They've got to come back for us to give an extension. So at this stage, I'm unaware that the, um, there's any proposed business to go ahead, but that sort of covers us into the future. There can't be land bank forever. This permit will have an expiry date of it. So unless someone buys it, um, this process will have to go to begin at some stage into the future. So I think that's an important fact too, that, um, but it gives the owner of the property more option to sell it with a planning permit. So that bearing in mind and the fact that all the objectors have come to an agreement and realised it's the best outcome for them, not, not the most ideal, they've put out the document there, but the fact that they've accepted the conditions, I think it's in our best interest at this point forward to, um, advise, um, VCAT that we consent to issuing of the permit. Thank you, Ms Jeffrey.
And councillor Jeffrey?
The, thank you. Uh, now, obviously, you know, the, the fact, we had some pretty lengthy discussions with the objectors and we first decided to refuse it. And it's good to see a number of those have been met, although, um, I suspect that while they've withdrawn their objections or, oh, I cope with the amended plans of public storage and something they want so close to their, their houses. But, um, as I said to a few of them, um, it may come to the point where you need to find middle ground and accept that if it goes to VCAT, it could be approved. And that's a difficulty we have as council and as councillors in determining those type of applications is, um, what appropriate development as well as the number of conditions you put on that VCAT, if it goes to VCAT, could be overruled and all, all the conditions wiped or have extra ones that puts extra work on council staff if they don't comply by putting a chain across a, a gate pile at night time. Um, so it really makes it fine, or it makes it hard having all the conditions with no staff power to necessarily enforce it. So support it if, and, um, it's a good outcome. Although we'll just, I guess, all those that get what Vic Roads are saying in terms of it won't have a adverse impact on the road. Um, I wonder if they scope out another hundred metres to the closest intersection where Plantal Island is a hard intersection to navigate. If they're coming onto the Murray Valley Highway, and this could, um, add further issues to that intersection. Um, happy to support it. Thank you.
Any speakers against the motion?
I'll speak against.
I'd like to speak against, um, although, you know, I wouldn't speak against to, to, to kill the motion, but, um, I'm going to speak against it because in these planning decisions, it's so difficult for councilors because, you know, in one respect, amenity is important. But if you buy a house, do you want a twenty-four hour truck stop put right behind you? Now, the ambid claim that this proponent put in could have been a twenty-four hour truck stop and that is why there were thirty objectors. It's, it's come back now. It's not going to be a twenty-four hours truck stop because there's going to be, um, hours of operation and there's going to be, um, chains put across the entrance that that will have to be, um, policed. So, um, I have concerns for the, um, residential, uh, area that is going to be so close. Um, I s- I, I just want to eject because I want to, um, represent those, those people. And the issue of amenity, um, so we've already got, um, you know, lighting, noise, vibration, um, smell, the smell of, um, petrochemicals that, that would, um, waft across to those residences. Um, and also an issue that was brought up again, um, do we need twelve plus? Do we need more and more service stations? And that was widely talked about in the community. How many service stations does one town need? Uh, you know, it could undermine the viability of all of them. Uh, so, um, Mr Costa said no adverse effect to surrounding. Now, that's a very subjective thing to say and I would disagree with that. Um, and it is, um, true, um, councillor, councillors have said that, um, it's going to be reviewed and, you know, Vic Roads are going to have a say on the entrance and the exit and the intersections. So there's a lot more planning to do, but, um, yeah, I, I, uh, I'm against this. Thank you.
Any other speakers against the motion? I'll call for a vote. All those in favour? Uh, oh, sorry, yes, thank you. Councillor McPhee?
Yeah, look, unfortunately, planning isn't, is one of the hardest decisions I find as a council to make. Um, amenity is a, uh, part of the planning scheme, but there are a lot of uses that different zones have. Unfortunately, this is one of the things you can't put petrol stations in suburban areas. And also, um, you, as councillors, we can't knock it back because there's coal stations in our area. I agree, they might be true, but that's a business decision. I don't know if buyers place, that's not a planning decision we make. And unfortunately, the fact that the county objectors have agreed to the amendments, we've lost the objections. So I think it's, we'd lose it, VCAT, and it's appropriate that we just agree to those conditions that they've agreed to one party's. Thank you, Ms Jeffrey.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Any others? No. And now take it to a vote. Thank you. All those in favour? None against. Thank you. And we'll get Mayor King in and I will vacate the chair. Do we need to make any motions to do that or not? Uh, okay. Yeah. Uh, Mayor King, the resolution was in favour of the item.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McKay for standing in. Thank you for that. Uh, item two point four, uh, July twenty twenty-four Essex delegation's update. Ms Morris?
Council has in place a range of delegations that do require, um, updating this particular delegation's, the S six delegation from council to staff. Um, as you're aware, this, uh-
Excuse me, Mr Mayor. Just for time, this is, as I say, it's a procedural matter. I'm happy to move the motion as per the recommendation.
Thank you, councillor. Further second up, councillor Jeffrey, do you wish to speak to the motion?
No, look, just as I said, Mr Mayor, look, this is a, something that comes up all the time. Our lawyers have said they're just up- updating them basically, that's all it is, and let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jeffrey, do you wish to speak? No? Anybody wish to speak against the motion? If not, I'll put the motion as in favour. Motion is carried. Thank you, councillor McPhee. Item two point five, twenty twenty-four Local Government Community Satisfaction Survey. Ms Morris?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, this is the results of the twenty twenty-four Local Government Community Satisfaction Survey, which we participate in each year as a community. Um, the state government does, uh, engage, uh, JWS Research to do this on, um, council's behalf. They undertake telephone surveys of approximately four, uh, four hundred people, which they, um, believe they get a good cross-section of our community doing that. There's some core measures that they survey and then also a number of other individual services, service, um, indicators that they measure at the councils and then, uh, they can provide us with the ability to then look at our results against other similar sized councils. And also you can access the statewide results, which we provide at a table on page three forty-seven of the report. And you can see generally, um, there has been a downward turn, um, right across the state in particularly the core measures. Um, you will also be able to see in the table underneath us, which is some, some positive news that our waste management area continues to, to rate quite high along with our parents of public spaces, our community and cultural services, um, areas and our community support services. Some of the areas that were on par to the previous year but still are rate or heading down lower and compared to the state, uh, unsealed and sealed roads and also our, um, planning and building permits were rated quite low this year compared to previous years. You'll be able to see, um, on page three forty-nine of the report, the comparison table, which shows you the, the core plus the other, um, service areas. You can see Swan Hill's results compared to the previous year in twenty twenty-three. And then there's also the comparative against the large rural and the statewide. What is also interesting in here for, particularly for offices, is we can sort of then see which year, which age categories scored us the highest and which age, age categories scored us the lowest and which areas of, of our municipality. Um, this is one measure, I guess, that provides us the ability to look at our performance across the organisation based on the feedback from the community and also taking into consideration the areas that we may need to be looking to try and improve, councillors. So the recommendation is that you note the contents of the, um, satisfaction survey of twenty twenty-four and then, um, notify the councillors to place it on the website.
Thank you, Ms Morris. Any questions, councillors? Councillor Kelly?
On page twenty-seven of the, um, report, um, which must be, yep, uh, the JWS report. Um, it says how to improve, which I suppose is helpful. Um, how does council, um, integrate that advice into? On page twenty-seven, it says, um, how to improve. How does council integrate that information into, um, their, their processes and, um, performance?
Um, thanks councillor Kelly for the question. It is a good question. This is, um, information that is readily available, not just to the public, but certainly to our executive team and to our management leadership team. Um, we also get some more detailed information, particularly around our roads area, where we can then determine which, which roads may be ours, which roads may not be ours, which ones we may have to advocate on behalf of Vic Roads. Um, and certainly this information can also be utilised in the development of our next, um, council plan. By councillors can take this into consideration as well. So it is, it i- it is a one measure, but it is what our community is telling us. So we do need to take notice and, and we do certainly, um, discuss it within the organisation. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no further questions. Can I have a motion, councillors? Councillor McKay?
Yes, I'd like to move as recommended.
Thank you. Second up, councillor McPhee. Councillor McKay?
I'd like to thank all, um, of our community who accept, uh, our services and for the, and thank them for the feedback that came back through the survey. It certainly had, you know, there's a bit of sobering reading there. Um, uh, and it does give us guidance about areas where we can improve and where the next council can focus. And very noteworthy is that, um, planning and building permits, uh, is an issue with a very low score of thirty-four. We understand that we have had substantial staffing concerns. I have great faith in our current leadership team in planning and, uh, not, but it does give us guidance about where we can direct our resources. Uh, also in, um, sealed, local, local sealed and unsealed roads, also it's an area of constant need. We are a massive municipality with an amount of resources, um, limited by our population. So we understand in our area that this is an ongoing challenge. However, there are a number of areas where there is, um, encouraging, uh, results in, um, the visual appearance of our towns, which I'll agree that, I think they're beautifully maintained in a lot of instances. Uh, probably can have improvements in the smaller towns, but I've, many, many visitors come to Swan Hill and say it's a beautiful looking town. Um, also in the area of community services, there was positive, very positive feedback and a few other areas. So thank you very much to all our, much to all our, all our staff, but also to let the community know that we are listening and we'll take on board those ish areas where we've got the poorest results. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McKay. Councillor McPhee?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Um, look, this is, as the, um, Ms Morris said, this is a, a measure of council, in only one measure of council. It's run by the state and four hundred people involved in this survey. And it's important to note that right across the state, all councils are declining slightly. I think all levels of government are becoming more and more, people are making them more and more accountable. And I think that's a good thing. And I think it's just a matter of, we use these results to make sure that we can improve where we need to improve. Um, but as, um, councillor McKay, or councillor McKay said, one of the areas, we did go up in some areas, not, didn't go down in all areas. One of the areas we went up was family support services. And that's even going through an aged care area that we're, um, moving out of aged care. I consider that part of this area, it shows that we are doing it in a, very kind and being very considerate to our community. So I think that's an important, and I think our director of that area, you know, just pat on the back for the, um, effort in relation to our, um, uh, the way we have moved out of aged care and moving out of it, or had moved out of it. Um, and it's, um, just a great learning experience for all of us to be, make sure that we are more accountable and make sure we keep bearing in mind what the community expect from all levels of government. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Does anybody wish to speak against it? Then again, in the interest of time, councillors, we've still got a lot to get through. Um, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Motion is carried. Thank you. Item two point six, in-principle adoption of financial performance statements, twenty-three, twenty-four. Welcome, Mr Free.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Got that on. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you.
No, that's all right. I'll start again. I'll hand over to our, um, finance guru for any questions. Um, so as you're all aware, councillors, uh, it's the time of year again where we are seeking an in-principle adoption of our annual statements, which incorporates our performance statement and our general, um, purpose financial information. This is an in-principle adoption now, um, that will also allow the auditor general to, um, provide, um, us with their recommendations in relation to our results. Uh, that information then can be, the in-principle documents can then be signed off by the two councillors, which is the mayor, the current mayor, and, um, councillor McPhee. And then that information will be, uh, also provided to the Victoria Auditor General's office and also be-
and also be made available for our annual report. So the performance statement has been provided to you and if you have any questions, obviously our finance manager will be able to answer those, but we are seeking an in principle adoption today. Please note that if we don't receive that in principle adoption today, then it could put us outside of the deadline for adoption of the annual report, which is the thirty first of October. Any questions?
Thank you, Miss Morris. Any questions, councillors? Councillor McFee.
Just one, just we're signing the documents. Have we moved that previously or has that been removed in this motion? Do I have to sign it?
No, it's already been done at a prior meeting. Yep.
Councillor Kelly, did you have a question?
Look.
Microphone, please.
My question is on page of the attachment, page four seven nine, so it's page ninety nine of the attachment, looking at the performance statement. It says our population is twenty one thousand two hundred and twelve. There is an asterisk there. And so wouldn't, I think, could we, could we always have a statement after we say our official population according to the census? Could we always have a statement after it that says that, you know, Robben Vale has eight thousand? I saw the other day that it said Swan Hill had eighteen thousand. So I'm just keen that we always qualify that that is not accurate.
Thank you. But the question, Miss Morris?
Just in answer to that question, so this is part of, this will become part of the annual report and at the beginning of the annual report, we'll actually put that exactly what councillor Kelly is requesting at the beginning of the document. Would that satisfy you?
I think so.
Yeah, so it's covered in the annual report, and the performance statement becomes part of the annual report.
Just on that, though, in the performance statement, that was their sort of like audited numbers. So we have had that commentary in there previously in the performance statement and we were asked to have it removed, but in the, yes, in the front of the annual report, we're still within our rights to comment on that.
Great. Thank you for clarification. Any other questions? If not.
I had a question.
Councillor Kelly.
In reading this on page one hundred and three, in the performance statement, it says, and these are fascinating, these, how they've taken out, yep, why is there no animal management prosecutions for the last three years? That was my question. So animal management is the second item on that page, page one hundred and three. It's page four eighty three, but it's actually page one hundred and three of the performance statement.
Miss Granger, you want to answer that question?
Yeah, we have managed to resolve those issues without it getting to prosecution stage. So we've had dogs that have been menacing, they've been euthanised rather than go through full prosecution.
Councillor Young.
I'd like to move the motion as per the recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a second up for the motion? Councillor Jeffrey, do you wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Young, if so, can you pop your microphone on, please? Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to commend the officers that have been, especially Ashley, who's been responsible for pulling all this together. We have looked at it several times during the year, so I don't think that we need to be asking too many more questions. It's a great job by everyone involved.
Thank you councillor Young. Councillor Jeffrey? Anybody wish to speak against the motion? If not, I'll put the motion, those in favour. The motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on to officer reports for noting, item three point one, quarterly major project plan updates, June twenty twenty four. Miss Morris? Microphone, please. Thank you, Mr Free.
Thank you.
Sorry, we're just waiting on Asen to come and actually deliver this report. In the meantime, I will talk. So this report provides a status of the projects managed by our P M O office and the teams across the council. This financial year, the P M O has continued to build on the actual progress made in the previous year, further enhancing its focus on project management and delivery. Been provided with a summary of the major projects completed during that year. Of note, obviously, the Lake Boga floating pontoon, Romval Leisure Centre, boardwalk and viewing platform, the Romval Skate Park, the Nia West footpath, the Swan Hill Town Hall exterior refurbishment, Romval Leisure Centre, Slush Park, Fish Point Road reconstruction, Tresco Road reconstruction and the dry fitness room in Swan Hill, along with the John James lighting in Robben Vale and the Nia West revitalisation toilet block. We obviously have covered quite a few projects in that time. Options are that council notes the progress made by the projects report and if there's any questions, I will try and answer them.
Thank you, Miss Morris. We have been briefed, obviously, councillors on these projects. Are there any other, any questions? If not, could I have a motion? Councillor McKay, as per recommendation. Thank you. Seconded councillor Kelly. Councillor McKay, would you speak?
Just to say that the report's really useful. It helps us as councillors to all. Keep track of what projects are in, still under work and what's completed. It's also good for the community. If a project is happening in the background, people don't know that it's occurring and what works are going on. So thank you to the officers, staff and people working on those projects. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McKay. Councillor Kelly.
No, I don't have anything to say.
Nothing further to add? Any speakers against the motion? If not, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Motion is carried. Thank you. Section four of the agenda, decisions which need action ratification, four point one, sign and seal, Mr C E A.
Taken as read, Mr Mayor.
Taken as read. Any questions? Move councillor Kelly, second up. Councillor McKay, do you wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Kelly?
No.
Councillor McKay?
No.
No? Any speakers against? If not, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Motion is carried. Thank you. Item four point two, councillor assemblies record of attendance and agenda items. Again, this just notes the contents of councillor assemblies and items that have been, attendance and items that have been discussed. Anything else further you wish to add, Mr C E A?
Mr Mayor, just sure they're accurate. Thank you councillors.
Thank you. Any questions, councillors? Corrections? No? If not, can I have a motion? Councillor McFee? As per the recommendation, Mr Mayor. Thank you. Seconded councillor Jeffrey, do you wish to speak? Councillor McFee?
Oh, you say this is about being transparent and what will we talk about during the second hour?
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Any speakers against? If not, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Motion is carried. Thank you. We'll move on to section five, notices of motion.
Can I move that we have a five minute, ten minute recess?
You may. Let's take a.
Looting absence? Or suspended standing orders?
Suspended standing, you want to suspend, suspended standing. Seconded councillor Jeffrey, suspended standing orders and take a five minute adjournment and we will reconvene at three twenty three. Just remain seated till the live stream is taken off. Make that three twenty five. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome back to the live stream of the ordinary scheduled meeting of council for September. We move on to section five of the agenda, notices of motion. Five point one, councillor McKay, your notice of motion.
Thank you. My notice of motion, the title is prevent further fish deaths, improve seasonal river flows. The motion is that council write to the Victorian Water Minister, Honorable Harry Ching, Federal Water Minister, the Honourable Tanya Plubasek and the New South Wales Water Minister, the Honourable Rose Jackson, one to express support for the constraints relaxation programme in both Victorian and New South Wales river systems and encourage that the programme rollout be expedited for the benefit of downstream communities, to enable more efficient use of environmental water, to mitigate floods, to protect entitlement by reducing spill events and to enable the agreed S D L adjustment related to this project. This means that water buybacks would be reduced. Number two, to express support for moderately increasing flow levels above current practice to maintain water quality and support the environment of the mid Murray, where there will not be an impact on private land, as it suggested is viable under the constraints relaxation feasibility study and by coordinating tributary flows through the Commonwealth Enhanced Environmental Water Delivery Project.
Thank you councillor McKay. Do I have a second up for that motion? Councillor Moore? Thank you. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes, I won't read out all of the preamble or background as I have written, but I will speak briefly and I hope in a way that can be understood. When we were young, until the mid nineties, we had a seasonal high river in winter and spring most years. And in that period, there was never a blackwater event in the systemic blackwater event. There were small and isolated blackwater events. In the last, since about the mid nineties, there have been two major blackwater events on the Murray and another on the Walco system. And the direct has been, in these papers that I've referred to and these studies, the cause has been that we have not had the seasonally high rivers to flush the system out. And so when there's a very large flood every six or 10 years, we've had a huge amount of organic matter spill into the river. The other part of the higher rivers, and I'm not talking about major floods, just that reach into the creeks, billabongs and lakes of our region, is that downstream of Swan Hill, lakes, creeks and billabongs would get water on a regular basis. And when friends have visited here during the past flood, they said it's like Kakadu without the crocodiles. Well, this could be a huge attractant to our area if we could bring life back into the flood plain downstream of Swan Hill. This is, the constraints relaxation is about the non controversial part of the basin plan. It is supported in our management of the Murray Darling Basin policy. And however, what I'm referring to is just small increases in flows to take out any possible controversial aspect and I have mentioned to the point of not impacting private land. What we're in fact asking for is to have a seat at the table with the government, to advocate for our area, to have lakes, lakes, creeks and billabongs bring life to our region. We're very, very hot in summer and it's, we have a huge, it's really not a lifestyle, it's a way of life of fishing, camping, skiing. So having access to recreational and environmental water in our region with no cost, but the cost that's going to be provided by the Commonwealth will improve our natural environment but also prevent those toxic fish issues that have been so distressing for people in our region, essentially. I grew up with fishing in my family. Everyone fished. I know how to put a worm on a hook. I've got a boat and nothing is, it's very upsetting, very, very upsetting to see fish die, which they did do. I could have added photographs to this notice of motion from Lake Kangaroo. Here we saw yabbies and crayfish coming out of the water, what are left of them after twenty eleven? And then right down to the Walco junction and Murumbidgee junction, there were small to medium sized and in Venefra, very large cod died in the last flood. So I ask for the support of this. It would be good for the respective ministers to hear that we're interested in getting outcomes from the basin plan. This is not a motion about water correct recovery, it's about getting better operations of the river. So thank you.
Thank you councillor McKay. Thank you councillor McKay. Councillor Moore, do you wish to speak?
Thank you Mr Mayor, yes, I do believe this is worthy of our support. As councillor McKay says, we want outcomes after all the pain that rural communities have gone through in the water buybacks process. And to this day, there's been very little in terms of outcomes, in fact, one could argue that we're actually worse off with three major fish kills since buybacks began. The history over time, and we've got to remember before 1990 to 1950, from the 50s to the 90s was an overly wet period compared to say, from the federation drought to the 50s, that there was an increase in rainfall of some 20, 25 to 30 per cent. After, when the 50s started and it turned around, it went predominantly dry again in about 1993 to be precise. And we've been in that dry period at least till now, and that's when we're slowly recovering, and we hope. We've got predictions of where the weather's going to go, we don't know, but we had at least 50 year dry period, we ended up with 50 year wet period, which sort of everybody's memory is of. That said, we've brought water back, and those outcomes will apply. We want those outcomes to apply and be tangible over the ensuing time, wet or dry. And I'm certainly suggesting that the constraints are part of that, but the second thing is, the management of the system has to change. It has to change to get these outcomes, and that is to mimic more of nature. When rain falls, let the water go, don't leave it, keep it in the dam, let the water go as nature intended. I think that's what we're really looking for, is to mimic nature again. We can't ever hope to get back to nature because there's just too many constraints. Every road, every bridge, every, everything, both in or around the Inandotan extent of the floodplain, is a constraint. And it's pretty, we can't, we're never going to clear that ever again. We'd like to clear it back to the way it was. It is a, it is a, it is a system that has a lot of constraints, but we need to sort of get back to something that's close to nature, what nature, how nature provided rainfall in the first place. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Moore. Any speakers against the motion? If not, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Motion is carried. Thank you councillor McKay. And item 5.2. Floor's yours again, councillor McKay.
Thank you. I would like to, I'll read out the motion. To request that the Commonwealth, the council write to the Federal Water Minister, Tania Blubasek, to request that the Commonwealth Government make a commitment to ensuring that the Murrumbidgee and Darling Systems make an ongoing reliable contribution to environmental flows, to support the connectivity and water quality of the Lower Darling and Lower Murrumbidgee, the health of the entire Murray-Darling, and to ensure equitable water recovery from all regions.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that motion? Councillor McFay?
Thank you. Once again, the preamble or background is there for all to read, it's backed up by some access to reports that are on the MDBA website. Things that are close to our councils' heart and the Murray River group of councils is that Victoria, Aaron and the Murray has made a strong contribution to environmental water holdings, so I've included the link to, that describes the water holdings in the different catchments, and we can see the lack of equity there. Also, the New South Wales Connectivity Report explaining that Darling River has had longer, of course, it's been a river that has had dry spells, that has much longer dry spells over the last 25 years. I think that we all understand there are legal commitments, that amount of water that must pass over the border to South Australia, when the other major river systems are not contributing little, it all has to be provided from the Southern Basin, putting an impost not only on the environment of the river, but also on the irrigation, irrigated community of the Southern Basin as well. Also, when you have issues of deliverability, we certainly can, the tributaries can help us get across deliverability issues. So this motion is essentially asking the government to ensure, as councillor Moore spoke about in the last motion, that we get, work with nature. We can't go back to nature, there's no way to do it to the totally natural system, but if we're going to get good water quality, if we're going to get flows working together, we need to have supply from the other tributaries. And so I think this is consistent, definitely with our Swan Hill Rural City policy, position paper, the Management of the Murray-Darling Basin, and it's only a way of just advocating to the Water Minister, Tania Blubasek, to say, we are here, and this is a positive thing, this could be a positive thing for us, and just advocating for our region essentially. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McKay. Councillor McFay, do you wish to speak?
Yeah, thanks Mr Mayor. Yeah, look, it's about the Murray-Darling Basin, to be environmentally sustainable, needs to have all the rivers working properly. And I think this is appropriate, just to ensure that the rivers north of us are playing their part in relation to it, and not relying just on the Murray. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor McFay. Have any speakers against the motion? Councillor Young?
I would speak against the motion. Probably not so much against the motion, but in relation to our document...
Your microphone please, thank you.
Our document, the Management of the Murray-Darling Basin, has specifically talks about that anything that happens will not impact on private land. Well, I think that's a bit of a pipe dream, because having been involved in farming, I can remember what it was like when we had the severe drought, and there wasn't a water availability. My big worry is that this is all going to stay the way it is, with the water buybacks, 440 gigalitres or whatever it is that's going to come out now, and 100 to Indigenous, and 195 that's now been mentioned, is that that will continue to happen, and then all of a sudden, we will find we've got no water, and out of that, we will find we've got no food. So I think that we need to be really considerate of what's actually happening with all this, make sure that we do follow what we've got in our position paper, and go for a, not so much reduction in environmental flows, but probably not an increase. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Young. Any other speakers in favour of the motion? Any other speakers against the motion? Councillor Moore?
Yeah, thank you. I'm pretty sure this horse has bolted. Ms Blubasek has said point blank, she's going to buy back more water, and this, whilst it says him on the surface, we've got to share the burden more equitably, it still means more water buybacks is behind this. And I don't know how you address that, other than selling water off, environmental water, it's already been accumulated in the Southern Basin, and buying more in the Northern Basin. The biggest issue is with the Northern Basin, that it's an unregulated system, and a lot has changed in the last four years, and especially within New South Wales, which is a prime area with the NRAA and their pursuit of those taking water illegally, and the connection flows, there's a hell of a lot happened in that time. So you really can't look back beyond the last couple of years to say, well, this used to happen, this is what happens, because that's not what happens anymore. Water, full compliance has now been achieved, I think, in New South Wales, and satellite monitoring is occurring at all stages. So there's a, there's a big difference in, you know, whilst some of the sentiment, I agree with it, but the point is, this is still saying more water buybacks, when I'm saying, the management of the system is really what we need to do. And the management of the system, it's commenced some time ago in New South Wales, and it's come a long way in New South Wales, and indeed Queensland, which does not have to be compliant in 2024 in terms of metering. We haven't even got there yet, to know exactly what water we've got, and how much will actually flow in a year, when everything is fully licensed, fully compliant, and everybody is acting on a level playing field. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Moore. Has anybody else wished to speak in favour of the motion? Councillor Kelly?
I'm for this motion. I think councillor McKay has thought through it very well, and we've had supportive support from the community. And this information has been gathered over many years, from speaking to the community, attending many courses, seminars, workshops, meetings. So I think our advocacy can be nuanced, and I think this shows an in-depth understanding of the river systems. Unless we have the Murrumbidgee and the Darling contributing, then the Murray has to give more, and that has a negative effect on our region. So important that our way of life, as councillor McKay has previously spoken about, we need that water, we need fishing, swimming, camping, boating, and that enjoyment from a healthy river. Our input and listening to the river people, as it says in councillor McKay's preamble, getting that voice of local people, and that more in-depth understanding, and advocating on that behalf. And I see here that the motion is consistent with our current policy, so I can't see that this is controversial at all. And I'll support it.
Thank you. Have any speakers in favour of the motion? If not, I seek leave from the chair to speak against the motion. If I could have an on motion for an acting chair, please.
I'll nominate councillor Jeffrey.
Councillor Jeffrey, do you accept? Thank you. I'll be grateful.
Well done.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. I appreciate the value councillor McKay's passion for this motion, and I guess overall, I probably agree with the sentiment of the motion, and about the equity and the sharing across the basin. However, as councillor Moore has pointed out, it really is just a motion about more buybacks, and taking more water, and continuing of the reduction of water available for the production of food in any part of the basin. What I don't like about this motion is that it pits one council, our council, against another council. It's saying, it's okay for us to keep our water, so we want to keep our water, so you take the water from somewhere else. Because that's okay if you take it from somewhere else, and you give, you let us keep ours. But in the reality of life, you cannot rob Peter to pay Paul, it just doesn't work. The other thing to consider is that the Murrumbidgee and Darling Systems are actually not that far away from here. And for those councillors that aren't aware, there are many businesses within our municipality who provide products and services far and wide from Swan Hill. They don't operate within a little 100K radius of Swan Hill, and mind you, the Murrumbidgee is only 100Ks away in places. They operate far and wide, and the livestock, that comes down to our livestock exchange, also comes down very far north, out of the, and raised on water from the Darling System, as well as the Murrumbidgee System. So if we want to continue to eat, if we want continued production of rice, of cotton, of corn, of nuts, et cetera, that are all produced on the Murrumbidgee and Darling Systems, not that far away, supplied with products and services from businesses in this town, and in this municipality, employing people in this municipality, creating wealth in this municipality, then we can't just say, we want to keep our water, but you can take theirs over there. I don't want to be a councillor that supports a motion that could see the reduction in business and prosperity of businesses within our municipality, and I believe whilst the sentiment, I understand the sentiment of the motion, I can't support it for that very reason. Thank you.
Thank you councillors. Councillor McKay, you have the right to reply.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate everyone's debate, it's been really great and instructive to hear people's different points of view. Just to reassure councillors, this motion neither being in favour or against buybacks, or even seeking to participate, however, it would, if the contribution was, you know, reasonable, it would actually protect industry in our region. And I am not seeking to pit council against one another, but I happen to be an elected councillor for Swan Hill Rural City, and advocating for the horticulture businesses in our area, but also for the environment and the system as a whole, that supports our industries, our communities, our towns. Yes, those rivers are very close to us, I am very familiar with them, having fished up on the Darling River as a child with my father and grandfather. And there are hundreds and hundreds and probably thousands of people in Northern Victoria distressed by the state of the Lower Darling, distressed by the water quality issues that were the start of the basin plan. However, it would actually reduce the impost on our region as far as buybacks go. And as far as I understand it, the MDBA are looking at connectivity and flow management scenarios in regard to the Darling River to improve flows. However, I'd love to introduce the idea, because I think it'd be great if it got into the media, that there are some, maybe horticultural operations like Carby Station, that maybe should be considered for buybacks, and have by their operation caused devastation to the river system, blocking off an entire river. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McKay. Debate's been had, I'll now put the motion, those in favour, those against. Motion is carried. Thank you councillors. Item 5.3. Councillor Young, if you could read your motion please.
My motion is that can council continue to advocate against the implication of current and future open market water buybacks within the Swan Hill Rural City irrigated farming areas through the Murray River Group of Councils, and any other meetings with federal government politicians and officers. I'd love to back it up by this document.
Hang on, hang on, thank you, that's the motion, do I have a second for that motion? Councillor Moore? Thank you. Now you may speak councillor Young.
Okay, I'd like to back it up by this document, which is the one that we work on, for working through the Murray River Group of Councils. I'll just go through my preamble. The Swan Hill Rural City Council has always recognised that irrigated horticulture is the biggest economic contributor to the region. This has been done over many years through various reports from within and outside council on a range of subject areas. Propping types include table and wine grapes, stone fruit, vegetables, avocados, almonds, olives, citrus nuts, and some other minor crops. The Rovember to Swan Hill areas are renowned horticultural regions that supply to markets throughout Australia and globally. The water buyback initiative has previously led to district farmers selling their water and withdrawing from the industry. This has led to productive land becoming derelict, dry land, and in many cases abandoned. The impact on such areas as Lake Bogan and Tresco has been huge, and resulted in many a very depressive landscape. This is now starting to happen in Wurundjeri, with a renowned historical property that was an original sold to settlement property after the First World War, being left with no water and all trees removed. We need to consider if this is just the start of this happening, and what will be the many effects and ramifications should it continue and increase. This is a growing Australia-wide trend in horticulture and other farming industries that rely on irrigation water to support rural communities. We need to be ahead of these trends that are happening within our farming industries, so that we can deal with the results and put in place initiatives to best deal with the results. Some of the simple things that are going to happen is that we're going to get much less money in rates, because the properties are just not going to have the same value, and that businesses in our region, as been said with the other motions that we've had put, is that the businesses are going to suffer, because they're not going to be able to sell to those industries that are no longer here. So it's a pretty dismal sort of a lookout, when you look at it in those terms. So I'd just like to encourage you to consider what's in this document here, because it is a very good document, and we've been working with the Murray River Group of Councils and other areas to just not advocate for water buybacks. We don't need wet water buybacks, because we're going to destroy a whole lot of things. And what's happening, I think, globally, to do with a lot of the issues now, to do with peace on earth, I suppose, we really need to consider our safety here, and that we do have a sustainable food industry, which is, if you listen to what's happening all around this country, up around the Bowen area, there's people that used to send five semi-loads of tomatoes to market, that are now no longer producing, they're going to go into cotton instead. There's other areas very similar to that, that are just going out of production of horticulture in many areas, so we're just not going to have food. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Young. Councillor Moore, do you wish to speak? Councillor Moore, you are supposed to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I do. Well, I just hold up our irrigated crop report for the buybacks that are currently underway to recover 450 gigs. In our crop report, it's worth 1.2 billion farm gate. That's a value chain of some four or five billion dollars every year, every year, contributed to the state and federal economy. And that 450 gigs is now going to be pulled out and that's what we produce from that 450 gigs. That this latest water buyback is going to pull that out of someone's economy somewhere. It might be ours or it might be a little bit. It might be somewhere else. It'll be in another valley somewhere. A billion dollars of income is going to come out of some rural economy somewhere. And that's the harsh reality of water buybacks. And we've already bought back 2.8 million megalitres. Now, I know some of that's low security water, but the net yield of that is often quoted at 2 million megalitres. Well, that's over four times what we know produces a billion dollars. So, you know, it's often quoted about, or asked about, what's the cost to the environment? Well, we tell you what, we certainly know what the cost to the economy is and it's a value chain of some 20 billion dollars every year through water buybacks has already been sacrificed by the state and federal economy and regional rural communities. It's a massive amount and we just don't need any further water buybacks until we actually know what sort of water we're dealing with and it's managed correctly. I think we all know there was a need for restraint and a pause and to re-establish the environmental outcomes that we need. But there's a point where we've got, I think we've gone too far and our food production is going to be threatened. Because this is not the end of it. This is not the end of it. If you think this is the end of it, this 450 gigs is the end of it, it ain't the end of it. There's already the, the wagons are already circling to go to 3,000 giglitres and 4,000, up to 8,000 gigs. So that, you know, when you've got a 10,000 gig sustainable diversion limit from the basin or the cap, rather, the cap on the mount, well, there's not much left, is there? So that, you work it out for yourself councillors. This is death by a thousand cuts. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Moore. Who else is to speak against the motion? Councillor McKay?
Thank you. I'd just like to add some nuance, I suppose, to the blanket position against water buybacks. Currently, the market to the, by the federal commonwealth is above the market value, I believe. I was told yesterday, significantly above. I do believe there are some irrigators who like to sell some water that they own at a high price and buy water back for production later on and make a profit. In this way, they can expand their operations. So independent people like to be able to sell their own property as water rights are considered now and not be restricted. And smart operators can actually reinvest the proceeds in our community. And people who tend to be involved with irrigation tend to continue to do that. That has been something that has occurred. As I said, I just want to add some further information to this debate. There were a significant amount of buybacks around pre-2012 and our irrigation industry has expanded exponentially since then. So our employment has expanded. We know that our population's, just heard quoted and not disputed by anyone, that Robbenvale is double its population and Swan Hill has probably 8,000 extra people and I'd certainly agree with that. Where are they working? They're all working in horticulture. Our employment has gone up by a huge amount and water buybacks did not stop that. In fact, the water reform has caused businesses to be more agile. Where the, I see more of the risk is that over time, the biggest operators end up owning the most of an asset or a resource. So we do, I do believe we do have risks that very large water trading corporations or businesses end up owning all the water or the most of the water. And what councillor Young is referring to is not stopped by water buybacks or by anything else because any irrigator or person who owns a licence can sell and will be more likely to sell to a corporate. They sell when they want to retire or when they want to use their asset in a different way. But I see one ongoing long-term risk is that that could be a risk to the diversity of our horticulture industry.
Thirty seconds.
And it's probably industry policy that we need. We need to, we do need to ensure that we maintain family farms, that we don't end up with a real disparity in only very, very large horticulture. And that's something that I would like us to be engaging with more in our future councils. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McKay. Any other speakers for the motion? Any other speakers against the motion? If not, councillor Young, you have two minutes' right of reply.
Okay, just a couple of things I probably didn't mention is the downturn in the dairy industry that's happened from similar buyback situations. We once had a wonderful dairy community out on the Tintinda Flats here, which we don't have anymore. And I would hate to think that that's what's going to happen with our...
Just a point of order, Mr Mayor.
Yes, thank you.
A right of reply only allows the person to reply anything raised in the discussion against, not new items.
Thank you councillor McPhee. You are correct. If you could limit your discussion to items raised against. Councillor Young, I've stopped the clock so you've still got just over a minute and a half left. Thank you.
No, just continue on.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, we've had the debate. Motion, I'll put now put the motion, those in favour of the motion, those against. Motion is carried. Thank you councillor Young. Item 5.4. Councillor Kelly?
Thank you mayor. I would like to move that a report comes to council assembly by 12th of November 2024 on the creation of Little Murray Urban Riverfront Rehabilitation and Landscape Master Plan.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that motion? Councillor McKay?
Couple of questions.
Yes.
There's certainly dates being confirmed for that period given that we've got an election and then we might have a council in place on that date. We might have a swan on a council. So rule the ready break in that day.
Through, Mr Mayor? Not at this point councillor Jeffrey. That's after the election, not before the declaration date.
When's the declaration date?
It's the 15th.
Fifteen?
Fifteenth of November.
No, later than the 15th. Is the declaration's date?
Follow-up question. Is a report, sorry, is a report underway over this master plan?
Are you asking me or the CEO?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Not, not necessarily.
That's it? I've got a couple of questions. I had a question around the date as well, that's been... Question to Ms Granja because I believe this would have been your department. Is this our land that councillor Kelly is referring to in her motion?
I imagine some of it would be managed by council but there will be other managers as well, other land managers. So it may be parts of crown land. But again, we haven't investigated in detail as yet.
Okay, so for any land that's not ours, would those departments go through some sort of expression of interest process to determine who might want to manage that land?
I think as we identify whose managers, we will talk to them. And within the preamble, it does talk to other authorities that we should be consulting with on this plan.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions?
Yeah, I'm trying to get councillor McPhee. I can understand whether it's coming from an issue to this, but I thought there was a, the motion that we put up previously about giving consideration to the Little Murray Urban Riverfront Rehabilitation Plan was not to develop, I don't want to do one, but others were doing it and we would help pay for the implementation of it. Which made towards it. That was my understanding of that initial motion. The intent of that initial motion was not to actually do it, wasn't it?
Clarify without my...
Because I put the motion up, I thought that was the intent of it. Was I thought the discussion we had around that time was there was a plan being done by North Central Catchment Management or one of the others. And the intent was...
Do you want me to answer?
Yes, if you can answer that question, yeah, please do.
The intent was that we do our own plan because the North Central Catchment Management has a greater plan for a much bigger area. So this would be just for the area we manage, which is Pendle Island Bridge to Pioneer Settlement, kind of that region, which we currently already manage it. Even though we don't own it, we maintain it, weed it, mow it. So not, the intent was to... Already, there's a draft plan that a previous environment officer has worked on, but it needs, it's in draft. So it needs to be, you know, completed. So there is already an existing... But it's a draft. So it needs to be taken on as a...
Does that clarify your question councillor McPhee?
Not really, no. Because the recommendation's asked for a report to come or the dates are issued as well on the creation of a Little Murray Urban Riverfront Rehabilitation and Landscape Master Plan. You look at the motion, it's in response to a favorable consideration we give into the Little Murray Riverfront Rehabilitation Plan, which is the motion is saying it's already a plan been done. We're looking to get some money towards it, not actually do a plan.
No, look, I think I was very clear in that explaining that there's already a draft. It needs to be completed. It's, we don't currently have a, we have the Riverfront Master Plan. So there's the Riverfront Master Plan of ours. There's North Central Catchment Management who's focusing on that area, you know, probably to the Little Murray Weir. But we need our own plan that contains these things because we don't just want to...
Hang on, you're getting into debate now.
I'll ask a question.
There will also need to be money for our, for implementation.
Have we got a plan? Or is there a plan in place? Are we looking to do a plan for this particular part of land?
Do you have to answer that, Ms Granja?
Yeah, look, my understanding is that a previous environment officer did a leadership project. Part of that leadership project, he developed a plan, but it hasn't gone through any formal council vetting or process.
I have a follow-up question just on... You've said you're unsure as to who manages the land. And councillor Kelly has said that council manages the land between the Pioneer Settlement and the Pendle Island Bridge. So can I get clarification on who manages the land? It's a follow-up question to my first question. And as I said, you've said one thing, councillor Kelly said another thing. And I'd just like clarification on who actually manages, who's responsible for the management of that land as it stands today?
Do you mean who owns it or who manages it? Or who maintains it?
Who owns it and who manages it under any form of agreement? What agreements are in place for the management of that land? Or is it a goodwill? So is there a management plan in place?
Director Johnson might, her staff, do the work.
Councillor Jeff, sorry, councillor Jeffrey, you want to...
Well, I was going to, so the motion's been moved and seconded. I was going to propose an amendment that might be this way. If you're, but yeah.
I'm willing to take an amendment and we'll see whether it's an amendment or whether councillor Kelly's willing to adopt it as part of it.
So...
Provided it's an amendment and not a substantial change to the motion.
I'll read it out and you can determine that. So the words are, "That a report comes to a future council assembly." Remove, remove by, and, yep. On the inclusion... Well, yeah, limited creation. On the creation of a Little Murray Urban Riverfront. For that master plan. So that a report comes to future council on the creation of a master plan operating for consideration in our council plan.
Sorry.
So after a master plan, adding for consideration in our council plan.
In our council plan.
I'm happy with that of, I'm hoping that doesn't stray too far from the initial intent.
I'm happy to accept that as an acceptable amendment because it doesn't change the intent of the motion. Councillor Kelly, do you accept that as a revised motion? Or do I need to take it as an amendment to the motion?
I think it's good that it's taken out the date. I feel like I want to explain why the date was there.
I'm asking you, do you accept the... Do you accept that as a motion? Or otherwise I will consider it as an amendment to the motion?
I think I'm happy with it because...
Is that a yes?
Just give me a moment. Yes.
Yes, thank you. So I'll accept that as the motion? Any further questions and clarification? If not, councillor Kelly, the floor is yours.
Just, oh no, you put councillor Kelly seconded as well.
Oh councillor. Yes, just back to...
So it was seconded was councillor McKay. Councillor Kelly, if you'd like to speak to the motion.
Yeah, look, thank you. This was mainly so that when the discussion occurs, leading on from the motion on the 4th of June, I didn't want to leave that kind of up in the air where the next council will say, what the hell does that mean? It needed some more teasing out and more detail behind it. And so I thought asking for a report on, you know, what a Little Murray Urban Frontier Rehabilitation it plan is, what it, why it's needed, what would be involved in making it. So that, this motion is about a report to that so that when the discussion about the surplus happens, and I was told that was going to occur at the November meeting, which is why I put in the date, the 12th of November, which is the assembly before the November meeting. I checked with Mr Pata, the director, about when the discussion on the surplus would happen. He told me it was a November meeting and that the discussion would happen at the assembly before that meeting. So that's where the date came from, just to clarify. And so this is just, rather than this motion from June getting lost, I thought a report to accompany that discussion would assist the future council. You know, I may not be part of that future council. I may be, but who would know? So this was just a report to make sure that the motion wasn't lost. And I don't think I need to repeat anything else because it's exactly what I discussed in June and the motion passed. So this is just a report on creating the Little Murray Urban Frontier Rehabilitation Plan. And mainly because this couple of kilometres of Little Murray, you know, people say Swan Hill is on the Murray. Well, it is. But it's also on the Little Murray or the Maribor River. And such a really special little river that it is. And so this master plan will mean that we manage that couple of kilometres for, not just for habitat and the nature that's there, but for the amenity and for the... You know, it's very highly used. Hundreds of people walk, jog, you know, cycle that stretch. And it does need, you know, a lot of our river frontages are really good. That's just not up to scratch. And we get letters... That's just not up to scratch and we've, we get letters from the community about it. So this master plan will mean we've got a plan to work to, um partners can come in and work with us on it. Um it's very highly um important um wambo wambo um habit, um country. And so it'll be, it'll be able to uh seek funding for it, work cooperatively with the CMA who have put in for a grant for seven hundred thousand dollars. Um but, and having that master plan will mean we know what we want to do there, involve the community, do the consultation. Um so it'll mean that um during that conversation, we're able to know, okay, what is this item? What do we need to fund? We want to fund a master plan and what it, what it'll contain. Um so I'm trying to act in accordance with governance rules um to assist that discussion when it happens um coming up, which it will.
Thank you councillor Kelly. Councillor Card, you should speak.
Um, yes, uh Little Murray, it's a beautiful part of Swan Hill and um we have done works in that area. For example, the removal of willow trees that has really made the point so much more accessible. You can see there's actually a sandbar under there and I think there could be swimming happening in summer. Um not only that, uh there has been other works done, tree planting at David Alamo Park, which my son participated in when he was three years old, twenty five plus years ago. So we have done some small works over the years, uh and I do think it's really, it will be a great spot for improvement. And it'll be a, uh just another lovely area of our town for people to enjoy. But the important part about this is I do recall at the time that there were partners wanting to cooperate and put um some investment into this project, being Ozfish, who do do um like to make the river accessible by helping communities to fund canoe ramps and fishing platforms, that sort of thing. And also the North Central CMA. So I think it'd be sensible for us to just progress the plan. As we have all learned being councillors, when you have a plan, good things can follow. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McKay. Any speakers against the motion? If not, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Those against? Motion is carried. Section uh, autumn five point five. Councillor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is.
Read your motion.
Oh, yeah. This is a motion to um uh a motion that a report comes to council, we'll need to modify that again perhaps. Um I've written here.
Just read it as, read it as is.
Twelfth of November. Well, actually I can change it myself.
You can?
Um that a report comes to a future council assembly, sorry Sharon. Um make that change. Um on the development of an urban green and cooling strategy.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that motion? Councillor Jeffrey? Any questions councillors before we start? Councillor Kelly, the floor is yours.
Similar to the previous motion, this is a report that will accompany um the discussion about uh what we do with our surplus. Um the future council will be considering that and this report will assist um any councillors that are new to understand what uh the motion of June the fourth meant. Um so it will just explain what the green and cooling open tree strategy is and why we need it. And so it's a report that can accompany that discussion.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Jeffrey, you should speak.
Yeah, just uh touch on that and a little bit on the previous one. Um obviously in our budget submissions, we did make um a commitment and our sponsors admitted to look favo- favourably on those, these two items. Um obviously we won't have an elected councillor on the twelfth of November, so not possible in my eyes. But um I think this gives the near elected councillor the ability to consider these as part of the council plan or future strategic um direction that the elected councillor may decide to take. It doesn't, obviously it doesn't commit them to the strategy or to any money or towards it or not, not towards it. So happy for them to be uh brought as uh a future report for sampling and consideration for the new council. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Do I have any speakers against the motion? If not, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Motion is carried. Section six on the agenda, councillors, foreshadowed items. Do I have any foreshadowed items? Section seven, do I have any urgent items not included on the agenda? No. So we will move on to number eight to consider and order on councillor reports. Uh and while other councillors get organised, I'll kick off with mine, kicking off the um time since the last meeting with the our Murray River Group Council's advocacy delegation to Canberra, a pretty couple of jam-packed days. Um not speaking to many ministers, but uh speaking to a lot of advisers, because ministers don't like to talk to us necessarily. Uh the Variety Bash, which was obviously a huge event for Swan Hill and surrounds. Reading at NIAA two book week, some of the, one of the enjoyable parts of being the mayor. Uh hitting the first hoops at the croquet season, celebrating the centenary with the Lakeside Golf Club, which I'm sure councillor McPhee hasn't been bragging about his trophy, so obviously he didn't win any that day out there. Uh and rounding out the um uh the time this month with a citizenship ceremony uh just last week, uh which is always, again, one of the most enjoyable parts of of being mayor and welcoming new citizens in into our municipality. Councillor McKay.
Oh, um I attended the Boundra Bend Community Meeting, I think that was somewhere in the beginning, the first couple of dates of this month. Then the NIOS, NIA District Action Group, uh the NADOC Hall. And there was one other item. I'd just like to commend the organisers, the committee who organised the NADOC Hall. It was absolutely uh a beautiful event. It was really fabulously one, um one fabulous performance by all the couples. Uh the organisers spoke so beautifully and the whole event was just a really lovely community gathering and I was really honoured to be a part of it. Um and like it is uh coming up council elections, I'd like to thank the Boundra Bend Community Improvement Group and the NIA District Action Group, of which I've been a long-term council representative. I've really loved being um a part of your um ongoing actions to improve your small towns. Thank you.
Councillor Jeffrey.
Yeah, thank you. All, I've had the last month is the B R O N E Progress Association on there. Wednesday the twenty first of August, which I'll email through to the minutes secretary. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Councillor Moore.
Thank you, uh Mayor King. Um I attended the Salisbury Arts Advisory Committee meeting uh last week. Um duplex user groups meeting at the Fed, rate payers meeting at the, at the club in regard to the duplex. Uh G M I D conference in Bendigo on your behalf, uh Mr Mayor. Um every business advisory committee uh and in late August and the Pendle Island Levy uh Steering Committee meeting uh in Medoks. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Moore. Just, and just to clarify, you were in Bendigo attending the G M I D uh meeting and not the, the protest that was, that was happening.
There was a big protest and the only park available was right where the speakers were and I had to park there because I was running late for the um press conference and um, yeah.
That just, just clarifies it for those that have, that have asked, asked that question. Thank you.
And after the press conference, uh Mr Mayor, some of my old neighbours were still hanging around after the thing, so I had to yawn to them.
Thank you.
About their concerns with the power lines.
Thank you councillor Moore. Councillor Young.
Um can I have mine put up there Sharon? Because I've got, it's only about three, but I can't remember exactly what I went to.
There you go.
Um yes, I went to the B P W changeover dinner, um I went to a committee meeting of Swan Hill Inc. And I went to the Winx movie, which I felt was important, because it was a fundraiser for the Swan Hill District Hospital. And I'd recommend anybody go and have a look at it, because it's a great movie. And that's all.
Thank you councillor Young. Councillor McPhee.
I've submitted a report, Mr Mayor, and I'll be attached to the minutes.
Thank you very much. No, Hollis?
Just read your stuff, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Kelly.
I also attended the Pendle Island Levy uh Advisory Committee meeting. Uh National Tree Day, tree planting with St Mary's McKillip, which was excellent. Uh I went to McKillip College presentation um of the musical Legally Blonde on behalf of council and that was excellent. I went down to the ITLAS um Integrated Transport and Land Use Study drop-in session in the main street uh one Saturday morning. Um and uh attending the health advocacy group meetings still. And I also went to the Winx movie, fantastic movie. Um hope it does really well at the box office now that it's premiered. And I went to an audit and risk committee meeting on the fifth of September.
Thank you councillor Kelly. Before we um move to go into uh camera council, I just want to remind the, the public that um we have no further business when we, when we come out of, of camera. Uh and this is the last scheduled meeting of council before we run into caretaker period, which starts at twelve noon next Tuesday, the, the seventh eighth, uh where we go into caretaker mode for, in preparation for the election. So um whilst we probably will still have a October meeting, there are no major decisions that this, this council can, can make any further. Um and I'd like to take, take this opportunity to thank the councillors around this chamber uh for their participation, for supporting me as, as mayor in the last twelve months and supporting me as a councillor in the last four years. Um so we still continue to function and operate as councillors. We're still here to represent and to serve the community. Uh we just won't be making any major decisions um beyond this point unless there is an unscheduled meeting of council uh between now and, and next Tuesday. So um we will be moving into camera. There's no further business when we come out other than to close the meeting. Um so I thank the members of the gallery, member, uh members of the public on the, on the live stream for your attendance today. Uh and can I have a motion councillors to move into camera? Move councillor McPhee, second councillor Jeffrey, all those in favour? Motion is carried. Thank you councillors, there being no further business to deal with. I will declare the meeting closed at four twenty four P M. You just remain until the live stream ceases.